We are calling our August 7th meeting to order and we got a couple items on the agenda. We first have a proclamation recognizing the ticket to Hope. I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Dumas who has the proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a great day in Hamilton County for our young people. There was a gentleman, Jim Foliano, hopefully I'm pronouncing it right when he comes on, he'll let me know, who saw our Beyond Your Imagination article in the Inquirer and other places and he chooses different organizations to provide tickets for young people and he looked at what our goal was and our vision and mission and he decided to give us some tickets for our young people that are involved in Job and Family Services. I'd like to this time read the proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing Ticket to Hope, where as Executive Director Jim Foliano founded the 501(c)(3) nonprofit Ticket to Hope to provide life-changing experiences for others drawing on his childhood challenges for inspiration and whereas during his formative years, Jim witnessed his parents struggling to cope with illness and financial issues which profoundly impacted him psychologically. This experience made him realize how quickly life can change and motivated him to help others facing similar hardships through a nonprofit organization and whereas Ticket to Hope provides hope and support to those facing difficult circumstances, helping to alleviate the burden of fear and promoting a more positive outlook for all community members and whereas experiences like concerts, sporting events, amusement parks, and movie theaters can provide a much-needed break from the challenges of everyday life and allow people to enjoy themselves and create positive memories and whereas Ticket to Hope has donated 500 tickets to Beyond Your Imagination, a new program of Job and Family Services allowing children who are in foster care the opportunity to enjoy a Cincinnati Reds baseball game. Therefore, be it proclaimed that Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners recognize the positive impact Ticket to Hope has on the citizens of Hamilton County and thanks them for the positive impact of their work. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio does proclaim Monday, August 7th, 2023 as Ticket to Hope Day in all of Hamilton County and is signed by all our commissioners. And I also think my colleagues were allowing us to do this on an unusual day because the ticket, the games is actually tonight and so we wanted to do it before the night, before the game started. So, he was going to, he's not on yet. Okay, so, Madam Chair, I'll pass it on to you. He's not on.
He's not on yet. Okay, I'll open it up, Vice President Drew House.
No, I just hope it doesn't rain, right? No, I think it's great. It's great that folks are stepping up in the community and Commissioner Dumas, you have led the way when it comes to providing these experiences for foster youth, which I applaud you for and now the community has gotten more involved in the effort. So, it's a great thing and I, as I said, seriously, I hope it doesn't rain tonight and I hope they get to go and enjoy the game.
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you.
And it just keeps coming. That's good. It shows that we have a county of people who are ready to step up and make sure that our youth, no one, because of their conditions that they're born into, it doesn't stop them from being able to experience these type of things. Just wanted to congratulate you. Happy to sign on to the proclamation.
Sure, absolutely. And Madam Chair, we have our Director of Job and Family Service is here with, I think, his staff to just say a little bit about BYI and.
Welcome, Director Patton.
Thank you so much for having us today. I just want to thank Jim and all the partners that have stepped up to the plate for Beyond Your Imagination. Up to this point, we have had about 1,000 people serve already since we kicked the program off because we have generous donations and folks in the community that really have looked out and have been thinking about ways that they can contribute to help children in foster care. So, I just want to say thank you to Jim and his nonprofit for thinking about our kids and all other organizations that have up until this point given their donations and their time and their energy to this effort. So, I just really appreciate it and thank you for your idea and like Commissioner Reese just said, that they just keep on coming. So, we look forward to them keeping on coming. Thank you.
Great. Did you have a presentation?
Melissa, you want to talk a little bit about our signature page here and our, so we had an idea and Melissa's really been driving this, this project. So, I want to recognize her publicly for the work that she's done up until this point, Melissa Henry and her team. And so, Melissa can say a little bit about what she's holding in her hand for the folks that have contributed to BYI.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having us. I'm so glad here to be talking about the Beyond Your Imagination program. And as you know, we sent over 120 people from foster care and their guests to the Taylor Swift concert, which was not only a highlight of their, their life, but also the highlight of mine. So, thank you for letting me to be part of that. And I thought about a way to how to recognize the board for getting this program started and how the support that you're providing. And so, while we were waiting on the buses to pick us up, I had all the youth sign these thank yous for you all. And sometimes you don't see the direct outcome of the work that you do and this is one way that you can. So, thank you all for your support.
That's awesome. And that's strange because I was saying, I'd like to see some of the young people as they go to their event. Do we, let's take, we want to take a picture?
Sure.
How do you come down?
Yeah. Oh, this is so nice. Okay. Item number two, three, I think it's two, three, and four. I'll turn it over to Mr. Aludo if you'd like to set it up for us.
President, and I'll turn it over to Lisa Webb here, Assistant Administrator. But this items two, three, and four are all three directly related to options that the board has for placing a levy on the ballot related to the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Gardens. There's been two public hearings on this. At this point in time, it's just a matter for the board to decide which option to place on the ballot. Lisa, I'll turn it over to Lisa for more detail.
One question, one thing before you turn it over. I do want to also publicly thank the Village of Woodland for hosting us for the public hearing that we had out in the community. So, just wanted to give Mayor Poole and his staff and team a shout out for hosting us. So, thank you.
Thank you. As Administrator Aludo referred, there have been two public hearings on this. The process for the zoo levy review actually began in January of this year with the Tax Levy Review Committee. They spent six months reviewing the levy, working with a consultant, Howard Werschbel and Company on their review as well to get to a recommendation in June, which then turned over to the commissioners and their public hearings. So, their work could not go without notice as well. What the commissioners have before them today are three potential resolutions for the zoo for the November election. Under consideration is a resolution for a flat levy at .46 mils, which would be $9 per annual for a $100,000 home. The second resolution is for a .48 mil levy, which would be a renewal of .46 and an increase of .2. That would be $10 for the $100,000 home. And then the third item is a increase to .57 mils, which is $13 for the $100,000 home amount. Those are the three that have auditor certificates that have been requested and received and for consideration by the board. Only one can be advanced to the ballot, but all three are prepared for the commissioners for their discussion today.
Can you walk us through two, three? Just, can you walk through it one more time?
Yeah, no problem. So, resolution, I've numbered them strictly to help with keeping them sorted because they're very similar. Resolution number 29 is the .46 mils resolution. It generates about $7.2 million a year for the zoo and that would be a flat renewal of their current levy. It's $9 per $100,000 home. The second resolution there, item number two, is .48 mils. That's a renewal with an increase of .02 mils and it would generate, I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me, but it is right about $9 million a year and would cost a $100,000 home $10 annually. The third resolution is for .57 mils. That is that full inflationary 15-year increase. That would generate about $10 million a year and would cost 100, actually, I can tell you, yup, $10 million, $10 million and $23,000 per $100,000 home and would cost $13 per $100,000 home. Apologize there.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to open it up, Vice President Drew House.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for the presentation on this item. So, this has been a long journey here when it comes to this levy and I want to thank those that have been involved in getting us to the point today where we've got what we need in front of us to make our decisions, particularly the TLRC, Gwen McFarland heads the group, but there were others involved in this subcommittee. I want to thank them for their time and energy on this. I want to thank the members of the zoo, many of whom are here today, always giving us enough information to make the decision. I know it was quite a bit of back and forth with the committee as well. So, thank you for doing your work. Thank the folks that weighed in. As we said, we've had a couple of public hearings on this and we're grateful for the public input. Also, those that weighed in via email that were not able to attend any of the hearings and then staff, Lisa Webb in particular, for doing all the work to, again, put everything in front of us that we need. So, as always, I am challenged by these decisions when it comes to the levies because for me, it's a matter of context and it's a question of, you know, what we can do in the context of all of the work that the county does. I have a great deal of respect and an affinity for the zoo. The zoo is unique here in Cincinnati primarily because of what they do well, which is animal care, the sustainability element, which I know is fairly unique to us, the horticultural elements that are so well-done at the zoo, and particularly the community engagement, especially with the surrounding community in Avondale with the new garden and all the efforts that are unique.
You have led the way when it comes to providing these experiences for foster youth, which I applaud you for. And now the community has gotten more involved in the effort. So it's a great thing. And as I said, seriously, I hope it doesn't rain tonight and I hope they get to go and enjoy the game.
Yes. Thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you.
And it just keeps coming. So that's good. It shows that we have a county of people who are ready to step up and make sure that our youth, no one, because of their conditions that they're born into, it doesn't stop them from being able to experience these type of things. Just wanted to congratulate you. Happy to sign on to the proclamation.
Sure, absolutely. And Madam Chair, we have our Director of Job and Family Service is here with, I think, his staff to just say a little bit about BYI.
Welcome, Director Patton.
Thank you so much for having us today. I just want to thank Jim and all the partners that have stepped up to the plate for Beyond Your Imagination. Up to this point, we have had about 1,000 people serve already since we kicked the program off because we have generous donations and folks in the community that really have looked out and have been thinking about ways that they can contribute to help children in foster care. So I just want to say thank you to Jim and his nonprofit for thinking about our kids and all other organizations that have, up until this point, given their donations and their time and their energy to this effort. So I just really appreciate it. And thank you for your idea. And like Commissioner Reese just said, that they just keep on coming. So we look forward to them keeping on coming.
Great.
Thank you.
Did you have a presentation?
Melissa, you want to talk a little bit about our signature page here? So we had an idea, and Melissa's really been driving this project. So I want to recognize her publicly for the work that she's done up until this point, Melissa Henry and her team. And so Melissa can say a little bit about what she's holding in her hand for the folks that have contributed to BYI.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for having us. I'm so glad to be talking about the Beyond Your Imagination program. And as you know, we sent over 120 people from foster care and their guests to the Taylor Swift concert, which was not only a highlight of their life, but also the highlight of mine. So thank you for letting me to be part of that. And I thought about a way to how to recognize the board for getting this program started and the support that you're providing. And so while we were waiting on the buses to pick us up, I had all the youth sign these thank yous for you all. And sometimes you don't see the direct outcome of the work that you do, and this is one way that you can. So thank you all for your support.
That's awesome.
And that's strange, because I was saying, I'd like to see some of the young people as they go to their event. Do we, let's take, we want to take a picture?
Sure.
How do you come down?
Yeah. Oh, this is so nice.
Item number two, three, it's two, three, and four. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ludo if you'd like to set it up for us.
President, and I'll turn it over to Lisa Webb here, Assistant Administrator. But this items two, three, and four are all three directly related to options that the board has for placing a levy on the ballot related to the Cincinnati Zoo and Botanical Gardens. There's been two public hearings on this. At this point in time, it's just a matter for the board to decide which option to place on the ballot. Lisa, I'll turn it over to Lisa for more detail.
One question, one thing before you turn it over. I do want to also publicly thank the Village of Woodland for hosting us for the public hearing that we had out in the community. So just wanted to give Mayor Poole and his staff and team a shout out for hosting us. So thank you.
Thank you. As Administrator Ludo referred, there have been two public hearings on this. The process for the zoo levy review actually began in January of this year with the Tax Levy Review Committee. They spent six months reviewing the levy, working with a consultant, Howard Wishbelle and Company on their review as well, to get to a recommendation in June, which then turned over to the commissioners and their public hearings. So their work could not go without notice as well. What the commissioners have before them today are three potential resolutions for the zoo for the November election. Under consideration is a resolution for a flat levy at .46 mils, which would be $9 per annual for a $100,000 home. The second resolution is for a .48 mil levy, which would be a renewal of .46 and an increase of .2. That would be $10 for the $100,000 home. And then the third item is an increase to .57 mils, which is $13 for the $100,000 home amount. Those are the three that have auditor certificates that have been requested and received and for consideration by the board. Only one can be advanced to the ballot, but all three are prepared for the commissioners for their discussion today.
Can you walk us through two, three? Just, can you walk through it one more time?
Yeah, no problem. So resolution, I've numbered them strictly to help with keeping them sorted because they're very similar. Resolution number 29 is the .46 mils resolution. It generates about $7.2 million a year for the zoo, and that would be a flat renewal of their current levy. It's $9 per $100,000 home. The second resolution there, item number two, is .48 mils. That's a renewal with an increase of .02 mils. And it would generate, I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me, but it is right about $9 million a year, and would cost the $100,000 home $10 annually. The third resolution is for .57 mils. That is that full inflationary 15-year increase. That would generate about $10 million a year and would cost 100, actually, I can tell you, yep, $10 million, $10 million and $23,000 per $100,000 home, and would cost $13 per $100,000 home. Apologize there.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to open it up. Vice President Drehouse.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for the presentation on this item. So this has been a long journey here when it comes to this levy. And I want to thank those that have been involved in getting us to the point today where we've got what we need in front of us to make our decisions, particularly the TLRC, Gwen McFarland heads the group, but there were others involved in this subcommittee. I want to thank them for their time and energy on this. I want to thank the members of the zoo, many of whom are here today, always giving us enough information to make the decision. I know it was quite a bit of back and forth with the committee as well. So thank you for doing your work. Thank the folks that weighed in. As we said, we've had a couple of public hearings on this and we're grateful for the public input. Also, those that weighed in via email that were not able to attend any of the hearings. And then staff, Lisa Webb in particular, for doing all the work to, again, put everything in front of us that we need. So as always, I am challenged by these decisions when it comes to the levies, because for me, it's a matter of context and it's a question of, you know, what we can do in the context of all of the work that the county does. I have a great deal of respect and an affinity for the zoo. The zoo is unique here in Cincinnati, primarily because of what they do well, which is animal care, the sustainability element, which I know is fairly unique to us, the horticultural elements that are so well done at the zoo, and particularly the community engagement, especially with the surrounding community in Avondale with the new garden and all the efforts that are unique to the zoo and I think have happened primarily over the last few years, to really do intense community outreach, to welcome in the community to the facility. So I'm very grateful for that. The zoo has operated in partnership with the county. I remember during COVID, we went up for the recognition for healthcare workers, and we worked in partnership with the zoo to make sure that they had a day at the zoo, which was great, and that the county had a proclamation to recognize those healthcare workers that had literally put their lives on the line during COVID. So when I look at these levies, the zoo in the context of all of them, and when I first got here, I realized we have seven levies. It's not something I knew before I became a county commissioner. But we've got seven levies, all of which were starving when I got here. Those levies are seniors, children's services, mental health, indigenous care, family services, developmental disabilities, and the zoo. And none of them had seen an increase over 15 years and even more in some cases. So in my mind, then I had to make a priority list, because you can't, from my vantage point, you can't raise all the levies at the same time or year after year after year, because at some point, the taxpayers, and they do push back and are saying enough is enough. We're not going to continue to support these levies. And so, and when a levy goes down, it goes away. It doesn't go back to where it was. It goes down to zero. And so there's real, it's precarious when we are putting these levies on the ballot, whether it's flat or with an increase. I have anxiety about this process and how, instead of going to a flat, it goes down to a zero. So these are the kinds of things I think about when I consider the levies. So we've, in my time here, we've prioritized, I've prioritized, seniors, kids, and mental health. Those were at the top of the list. They've all come around and it's a five-year cycle. And so we've got a few to go. As I said, none of them have seen an increase in 15 years, the zoo included. But I am still working through my priority list. So from my vantage point, you know, and I can only speak for myself, I have tried to take a very deliberate approach to this, trying to balance the impact to the taxpayer and the needs in the community by way of what is funded through these levies. That said, I can't control all the levies. The board doesn't control all the levies. So there are other levies that go to the ballot without any input from the board. I can't do anything about that. This is simply the seven that we have under our control. When I think about the zoo levy, I think about a couple of things, and I've taken all this stuff into account. The zoo, unlike the others, I would argue, has the unique ability to raise money. DD can't raise money. Mental health can't raise money. And so that weighs on my decision. I've taken into consideration the recommendation of the TLRC, which was a split vote, but also the consultant's report, which indicated, from their perspective, the zoo does not need an increase over the next five years in this levy cycle. So that weighs on my decision. So I've thought long and hard about this. I appreciate the input from the zoo. Many people have contacted me about this, pro and con, to be fair. And so my vote is not a reflection on my attitude towards the zoo, because I really, really like the zoo, and I admire the zoo, and I admire the leadership of the zoo, but rather a reaction to the growing community needs and the limited capacity to go to the taxpayers and raise taxes over and over again. Therefore, I will be voting for continued support for the zoo by putting the levy on flat, but I cannot support the increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice.
Ooh, mics are working today.
Thank you, Vice President Drehouse. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. When we talk about $9, $10, $13 that this would generate, it sounds like a simple thing. What's the big deal? $9. But I look at the concept of it all, and I look, you can't look at the zoo levy in a vacuum. Do we need it? That's a question for me. As I looked at the consultant report in 2022, the attendance has actually increased, which is great. The total operating expenses for Cincinnati Zoo is 17%. Columbus is 29.1%, and Toledo is 58%. I also read in the consultant report that attendance increases as new exhibits come into the zoo. And I have been reading quite a bit. There's a lot of new infrastructure planning on being built, which tells me that we will have more attendance. I did ask for additional report as it relates to if we raised the ticket rate, if we're saying 65% of our visitors come from outside of Hamilton County, then what if we raised it $2 a ticket or $3 a ticket? I did get additional information, but I still did not get what I needed. And what I mean by that, if there are a million visitors and 65% of those visitors, what's 65% times $3 increase? What is that number? And what will it generate as it relates to revenue? So still didn't get that. Appreciate all the information that I've received from all of those that are representing the zoo, and it was very helpful. And lastly, as I looked at the recommendation from the consultant, it said that the county should be the payer of last resort. Well, I have to listen to that. He's a consultant, and he's also saying that the zoo can do okay without an increase. So with that being said, I am also looking at a flat rate for the zoo. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas. Let me say that I'd like to add that we love the zoo. Zoo has been a tourism attraction, has won many awards, uniquely located in a neighborhood. I've had a chance, as a different role I had as the Deputy Director of Tourism at that time, to go to all the zoos in Ohio. And while I had to promote all of them, I will say that we are the best. And we have great leadership, Thane, and his outreach with his team to the community. Mike is the board chair. Mike and I have worked on several groundbreaking projects over the years. I'll be honest, when I got here, trying to understand these levies, because when I was out and campaigning door to door, and even some of my own neighbors who are seniors were saying, hey, I'm retired now and I just can't afford this extra cost. Is there anything that could be done to try to lower the cost and be more affordable? Because I'm on a fixed income and I don't get extra, even though I'm charged extra with the property taxes and people trying to hang on to their home. I remember a senior handwriting, and you could tell her hand was shaking. And she had said she had never missed a payment before, but she just cannot hang on. I remember going to the beauty shop, and the woman has a house, she lives out in Forest Park, and she has a beauty shop. She said, I love, I like to give back, but I'm going to be under if things just keep escalating on my property taxes. So when I first got here, I'd asked, I didn't know all of the processes. And I had a meeting with Mr. Ludo, and I said, what are all these levies? And honestly, I thought that this levy would be coming off. I said, oh, well, this would be ending, and then this would come off, and we can reduce some costs. I had no idea that I would be sitting here talking about an increase or that kind of thing. So I kind of started there, because I just didn't know how it worked. And I thought it was odd that the other levies, as Vice President Drehouse indicated, they dealt with more social services. There is no one that, you know, kind of comes in and says, I want to kind of sponsor these social services. And so it was like, well, what can you do? You can't do anything. Seniors need a senior levy. People with disability, they definitely need it. We made a tough choice. I mean, it was tough for me. I'm all for solving mental health, but I was very concerned about raising the taxes. But people said they wanted more to help with the mental health, and that's why I'm always, always on them. Once we pass the levy, if I don't see something happening, then I get kind of not too happy about it. The hospital levy was flat. And honestly, I probably would have went for maybe a little more for them. Children's Hospital's also number one, but they didn't get any extra money. And so many people can't, are going to the hospital right now that just can't really afford it. But we stayed flat. The children's levy, which I, you know, have some concern in terms of extra money, and I'm challenging that to make sure that no money is sitting around. So I've been very, I think, attentive, as my colleagues have, on these issues as it relates to taxes. Then, of course, I get here, we learn, because most people don't understand how county government works, there's other levies that we don't have nothing to do with, and we don't have any ability to deal with it. So on one hand, we're saying we want more affordable housing, and we've got people who barely can hold the house they got. And I have been one to say affordable housing doesn't mean new product. It means also keeping the people that's in the product that they're in. But then we said, hey, we're not the experts. Let's get a report. So it's not about how we feel or how we think. Let's get a consultant, which I was a little concerned about, as you know, and I want to thank you, Lisa Webb, for all your work. You've helped walk me through these levies, because this is kind of my first time going through the levies in this capacity. And I even asked you, why do we need to pay these consultants? Because I'm not big on just paying consultants. But we paid one. And TLRC, I want to thank Gwen McFarland, her leadership, the board's leadership on TLRC. But even they couldn't come to a unanimous decision. So then we get this report from a consultant, and we paid a bunch of money. And it says on here, on the report here, it says, "Review process upon receiving the zoo's request, the board retained Howard Wishbelle Company consultant led by James Horkey to undertake a performance review of the zoo." So I went along with it, even though I wouldn't, you know, I said, we're not wasting money. Among other things, the consultant was tasked to evaluate the zoo's current operation efficiency, access its compliance with its current contract with Hamilton County. And I know that in our last meeting, Vice President Drehouse brought up a point about the contract, because there were some promises, and then the promises changed in the contract. But also, it suggests provisions if the county and the zoo, if the levy is renewed, and recommend cost savings and enhancements. The consultant issued its final report on May 8, 2023. And here's what it said. "Finally, through the preparation of the hypothetical forecast, we address the ability of CZ and BG to meet its community need without ongoing increases in the levy." It goes on to say, it goes on to say, "To address this task, we focus on recent historical results, management's forecasts for 2024, and the use of what we believe are conservative assumptions. The results of our analysis indicate that even if operating results decrease from current levels and the current levy is renewed without an increase, cash flows are expected to remain positive." This is an indication the current financial outlook does not support an increase of the levy. Now, these are people we paid. I didn't know them. I didn't know them personally. They also come back to say, "The overall long-term financial strength has improved between 2018 and 2022. During this period, net assets with capital-related items excluded increased by $18.5 million, an indication that the recent trend in the long-term financial health is what? Favorable." We love to hear favorable when you're getting a business report. It is also commendable that capital expansion over the recent levy period was not funded by long-term debt, so they're not tied to the debt part of it. So looking at this report, and it's not to say the zoo, it's saying the zoo did positive things, but it's also saying that we don't have to have an increase. And this is from the people that went extensively into it and those kinds of things. I've asked, and I know some of my colleagues have asked, I asked about, what about putting it with the tourism tax? And they said, well, we can't do that. We've asked about, what about increasing ticket prices on the, because you've got a lot of out-of-town people. Let them pay the price. They said, well, we don't want to, we don't want to be unaffordable. Well, we also don't want to be a county that's unaffordable. And with affordable housing and these other things that we have to do, the seniors, the disability, the mental health, the hospital didn't get a raise. They flat. Children's Hospital didn't get a raise. UC Hospital didn't get a raise. And so it's just hard for me with this report. And I also got an email from our auditor, Bridget Kelly, who wants to meet about the assessments that's getting ready to come out on people's properties. So that's getting ready to go up. And we're trying to figure out how to do that. We know there's the law, but how to do it so that it doesn't make Hamilton County unaffordable. So with all that being said, like I said, it's another person, I love the zoo, I promote the zoo, we'll continue to promote the zoo. But at this time, based on the facts from the consultant, the fact that we're getting ready to have assessments where people, property values are going to go up, meaning their property taxes are going to go up, considering there's other things that we don't control that will probably hit the ballot, and the fact that I know from this consultant that the zoo will be all right, I'm going to have to agree to also go flat. With that, I will call for a vote, if that's where I'm supposed to go, right? Is that the next thing to do? Okay, just want to make sure. That will be, I, resolution two, I'm recommending adoption. The resolution number 29, item number two.
Resolution number, item number two, yes.
Resolution number 29.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, everybody. We really appreciate you. Item number five, are we going to this? This is one that we don't have any control over. Mr. Ludo, I wanted to make sure that's true, because I don't want anybody leaving here saying, well, you didn't, you didn't want the zoo, but you wanted the library, you didn't want the library, you wanted the zoo. The library is a pass-through. Am I correct?
It is. Commissioner, again, I'll defer to Assistant Administrator Webb on this, but this is one of those that is kind of a nuance of the Ohio Revised Code, I think it's 570523, that requires when the library board is asking for a levy beyond the 10-mil limitation or the inside millage of the county, that it be submitted to the taxing authority of their jurisdiction, which in this case is the Board of County Commissioners, which under the Ohio Revised Code has no choice but to submit that to the Board of Elections. So it is a bit of a pass-through. The board doesn't have any discretionary authority. So that's all you're doing on this item today. Lisa, anything further to add on this?
That perfectly. This is a subject that the board shall adopt the resolution as the taxing authority for the library. I would note, just, this is more informational, but I found this very helpful for levies this year on the ballot. The Ohio Revised Code, the legislature made some changes in the past year. So now levies, when they do go on the ballot, will specifically outline for taxpayers, the auditor's estimate of collection rates for the levy, the millage amount, as well as the $100,000 home amount. So individual voters can do their own math to figure out the impact of each individual levy on their taxes.
Okay, thank you. Let's do this. This is a procedural. Let's move with item number five for passage. And that's, I don't know what resolution number, but it's item number five.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioner Dumas, you said Jim?
Foliano.
Foliano is on?
Yes.
Okay, welcome, Jim Foliano. Can we see him?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we just gave you a proclamation with your own day. Commissioner Dumas, do you want to let him update him?
Sure. Good afternoon, Jim. I think you probably did it on purpose, not showing up when we were reading the proclamation, because you seem like an extremely humble man. So now that you're here, we want to, of course, recognize you for what you're doing in the community. And would you like to say a few words?
No, it's just, listen, it's just such a blessing to be able to, you know, be in this position to, just to help the community, right? And over these past couple of years, since- And, and over these past couple of years, since I started Ticket with Hope, I, um, definitely have, uh, really enjoyed partnering with organizations, um, such as, such as this. And at the end of the day, you know, when we're able to partner together and, and, um, you know, collect resources and, uh, the kids are who wins. So, um, I'm just looking forward to tonight, and yeah, I just, I appreciate everything.
Well, thank you so much. And the board is excited about the 500 tickets. I didn't know if you guys wanted to say anything.
Yes, Jim, thank you for reaching out to the county. We really appreciate you reaching out and, uh, reaching out and presenting something. We have a lot of people reach out, but we're talking about reaching out and presenting something to help the youth. And, uh, we think with the 500 tickets and with our youth, we can bring some real good luck tonight. And, uh, I know, uh, Vice President Dreehouse concerned about a little bit of the weather, but I think we can pull it off. So thank you for reaching out and bringing something positive for our young people. Most young people are doing something positive, uh, but we always hear about the negative stuff. So thanks for reaching out to Commissioner, uh, Dumas, and thank you, Commissioner Dumas, for the proclamation to honor people that are doing something positive in our, in our community. Vice President Dree-
I just want to echo the thanks. Um, it's, it's super exciting for 500 young people, uh, to go to the game tonight. I, I know it's, it, it has already rained today. I'm going to an event actually tonight about the ballgame, so I, I'm optimistic too. Um, but yeah, let's pull out a winner. I think these kids might bring us some good luck. So, uh, thank you for your generosity. It, it's really appreciated.
Thank you all so much.
And we'll make sure that you get hold of the proclamation that we produced for you, okay? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move to item number six, uh, Mr. Brugan, but, uh, Mr. Ludo, did you want to set it up?
Uh, no, nothing more than just to say that, uh, we try on a quarterly basis to give the board a formal overview as to where we are from a budgetary perspective. Um, we had some, uh, a little bit of, uh, delay getting this one on, on the calendar initially, so the, uh, but it only serves to give the board a, a, a better picture of where we are because the later we get in the year, the more we've got, um, a better assessment as to where we're going with projections. So John's just gonna, he, he sent a, a, an overview memo out to you. You should have that, it's going to go into a little bit more detail, but he's going to give you a high-level overview today.
All right, welcome.
To be here, I'm a little concerned that the room emptied out when we-
I know, the budget director shows up and everybody leaves.
So I have a very brief presentation here that just hits the real highlights in our second quarter projections. First, if you can go ahead and go to the first, oh, can I, oh, I can do this, this is exciting. I haven't done this before. All right, so we'll hit on our general fund revenues, general fund expenses, and our, um, our projected, um, reserve balances. I will note that I've got these three little dots in the middle of the screens there that are indicating there's some material that's not included that is in your full packet of budget projections. This is just the top and the bottom of these tables. I didn't want to try to fill a whole screen with numbers. So on the revenue side of projections, the general fund is looking, is looking, actually, we're looking at really good news this quarter relative to first quarter period. Um, we've seen a turnaround on revenues, we're now projecting over revenue, which is good, and, uh, we're still under budget on expenses. On the revenue side, we are up, um, about $11.5 million over revenue. And the big, big story here is on interest earnings. We knew our interest earnings estimate at the beginning of this year was very cautious. Um, we weren't far enough in the year that we felt comfortable with increasing it in the first quarter. We now are comfortable to increase that estimate. So this is a big one. I've, I've never, I remember the years when our total interest earnings weren't as high as this increase. So, so we can now say we think interest earnings are going to come in about $16 million over what we budgeted in that figure. So this is a big move. Um, but it's not the only positive news on the revenue side. Sales tax, we are now at $5.2 million over budget. That's an improvement of about $3 million from the first quarter, so that continues to improve across the year. Um, April and May in particular were quite strong. June was not as strong, was not nearly as strong. July was okay. So we're still not seeing sales tax performing at the booming rate that we saw a year or two ago, but we're still cautiously optimistic. We still expect that it will continue to come in over budget for the rest of this year, or at least in that neighborhood, where we have a very cautious budget estimate for, um, for July through December still on that front. Um, and even on sort of the negative side of revenues, where we were below budget in things like public defender reimbursements and, um, and the real estate-related fees that we bring in, we still saw improvement over the first quarter. So we're still under budget there, um, but both of those numbers got better between Q1 and Q2, which is what we expect. We try to be very, very cautious about these estimates. So on the revenue side, overall, good news, we're up, um, to $11.4 million over budget. So very good stuff there, I think. Very good stuff there, I think. Um, on our second slide, we have expenses. Um, there we moved just a little bit from first quarter, where actually, we are a little higher on expenses, we're projecting 1.2 million over on expenses. Um, that's made up of a couple of things. Juvenile court is a bit higher than we were first quarter. Now, we've briefed separately on what's going on there around some requests to expand, um, expand services and personnel additions there. We're projecting it 3 million over. It's a very, very cautious number at this point too, as we start to see those, that programming roll through the department across the year. The other change here is in non-departmentals. We're actually, um, up about $800,000 from Q1 in non-departmentals. The payouts that we do centrally in the general fund for retirement earnings, so these are sick and vacation payouts for our retiring employees, are all done centrally out of our non-departmental, um, department. It's, um, it's a very difficult number to project. We don't know when those are going to go out the door. Uh, we can say as of the middle of the year that we are going to be exceeding budget in those payouts by the end of the year, and we're estimating about $800,000 on that front, which is a different number, um, than we were looking at in the first quarter. And those are really the two big pieces on the expenses, but the bottom line is we're still projecting 2.2 million under expenses, under budget, um, by the end of the year. And then the third screen here is just our reserve calculation. We're projecting 21.2% of operating expenses in reserve at the end of the year. Again, this is a, a, a very good number driven mostly by that revenue estimate. Um, we were at, um, we're up 4.8% on this figure from where we were on the first quarter, um, up $17 million total, um, from our first quarter projection on the reserve balance at the end of the year. So pretty good news on all of those fronts. The full report that you've got also has a breakdown of what we're looking at on all of our 80-plus restricted funds, but this is the key numbers I wanted to go over with you today.
Yes, Mr. Ludo.
Just a, just a little bit of context, and, uh, first of all, I want to thank John, uh, and his staff for all the work they do to keep the finances of, of the county, uh, transparent and on track. Um, John does an, and his team to do an excellent job of making sure that as we come forward with a budget request, um, every year, that it's one that is grounded in really firm assumptions, uh, as well as, um, being prudently cautious. And that's something that we do, um, as matter of practice, uh, so that, uh, we have the ability over time to, uh, make good decisions and that we place the board in a decision, in a position of, of, of having, to be in a position to make investments and not anytime possible to have to scale back on things. And we've done a pretty good job of that over the years. Uh, a, uh, another administrator once told me there are two kinds of budget directors, cautious and former. So, uh, uh, John does a great job of that, and it puts us in collectively in a very good position. Um, with that in mind, I do want to just remark on the interest earnings. Um, it's, you know, as John said, this is, it's rare that we have something like this happen where you have an, a, a revenue number that's significant over. Uh, but I do want to just call our attention back to, uh, middle of last year, almost a year ago now, when we were making the projections on interest earnings, uh, and the economic environment that we were in at the time. And, uh, most of the pundits, most of the, from the Federal Reserve to other forecasting agencies, were seeing that we were probably going to be entering into a recession at some point in time over the next several quarters. It's a recession that has kept getting kicked out and kicked out and kicked out, and now they're talking more and more about soft landings, et cetera. So where we were, what we were, had been projecting was the likelihood that at some point in time, the Fed was going to start clawing back on some of these interest rate increases. Just hasn't happened, uh, at this point, to the point where our interest earnings have remained, uh, pretty robust. So the interest earnings is not a revenue source that we like to really latch into as long-term sustained spending, uh, because it can fluctuate so, so significantly, but nonetheless, uh, we, we take the positive with the negative anytime we can get it. So, uh, just wanted to call the board's attention to some of those dynamics.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation, uh, because this is very important and critical. Uh, I do want to say, I know there was an article that said we were one of the top places to do economic development. I want to put out there, that doesn't mean come run down here, we don't have a whole bunch of money to give developers all over the place because, you know, now everybody in the country will be running down here. So, um, wanted to ask you though about the restricted funds. I know we didn't get into those, but a lot of our stuff comes out of these, some of these restricted components. For example, uh, it's not restricted, but we self-instrict, we self-restricted ourselves as it relates to the stadium fund. It's not, it doesn't have to be restricted, but we decided to do it. How is that looking? Um, I know you didn't-
Stadium fund in particular?
Yes.
We're, we're about at budget on that fund. Um, I think, um, stadium in particular, yeah, stadiums are basically, right, are performing as we would have expected them to. Um, the restricted funds in the report, we, we, we see ups and downs in them, but sometimes it can be just based on what activity we knew was coming that year. So in the full narrative report, we highlight those areas where the fund is doing something different than what we were expecting at the beginning of this year, and the stadium funds are performing about as expected.
Were there any other restricted funds that we should pay close attention to?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of them with some red dots on them, which means their reserves are a little low, those might be the ones that catch your eye in the report. Um, even those, there's a lot of restricted funds that, you know, they get a red dot because they have very little reserve, but they were intended to have little reserves. So they're, they're basically pass-through funds. There's a few court funds that we're keeping an eye on, but this is often the case with, with some of our court funds. We've seen, um, court fees and fines fall, um, over an extended period of time. And so there's a few special project funds and court-related funds that have had continuously falling balances. We're keeping an eye on those. We know some of those expenses are going to have to shift into the general fund in 2024, but we've been watching these for a few years and not overly, overly concerned about it. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars in those funds. The only other one that jumps out at me a little bit is some of the things that we're doing around parking investments with the projects on the riverfront and some of the revenues there. And our parking fund is one that we're watching closely, uh, closely. We haven't seen revenues quite recover from pandemic. Parking is lagging some of the other areas that we've seen economically in terms of coming back. Um, and we do have some investments we need to make that we're, we're, we're planning to use cash in that fund for various things, so.
Yeah, I was interested in that parking fund. Uh, you know, like you said, COVID, but a lot of times when it has the largest amount of cars coming, we've kind of, through contracts, uh, I don't know, some might have been tied to the, I know like the, the Bengals one was tied to the lease, I guess, with 98% or whatever they get on game day. But, and then the Reds get a couple, but then we have some like with Heritage Bank, um, that I didn't really understand, some newer ones. And I just, I just want to put on the radar that I'm concerned about that because it's like, we own the park when nobody's down there. And we're saying we're going to pay back these funds through parking revenue. But even if there's a concert like at Andrew Brady Center, I started going through these, uh, contracts, and I see they got a contract, I don't know, there's 46%, something like that, they get the revenue on concert days. Then we give away Heritage, they get a percentage on concert days. And then the ones that we're doing down, the one has not opened yet, but Finley Market, and then the other one across the street, there's a deal with the FC. I think Finley Market we should do better because there are people that do come down to Finley Market, but I just want to keep our eye on, as we go into the, I don't know when these contracts are expiring or what have you, but I wanted to put on record that I want, um, to know a little bit more about them before we just go into them. It's like we build these things and everybody's getting the revenue. I don't know how FC is going to do. It seems like we built a garage that will help them with their hotel, because they don't have to build a garage, they have a hotel. Are we going to get, you know, what is that agreement going to look like if we're on the hook for the debt to pay all this debt back? So I just wanted to, um, maybe get more information, um, maybe we need to, you know, maybe that's another session, just to understand, what are these parking agreements? The taxpayers are building the parking, we're taking on the debt, and parking is available, we get 100% when nobody's around, but when it's people coming down there, we get little. And I know some of them is tied to, I know the Bengal one is tied to that, um, I'm sure when we started looking at the lease, those kind of things, but I'm more concerned about we're doing this more and more often. And, yeah, like I said, FC is building a hotel, and they already got a garage. And are we going to get anything off of it? Because we got a debt on the garage.
Vice President, not to answer that question directly, uh, because it's a really important question, requires some detail, but, uh, just to say that, uh, we are teeing up Joe Feldcamp for a full parking presentation to the board, which can go directly into those, uh, those issues over the next couple of staff meetings.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. I just, I'm, I'm learning a lot and kind of, and I'm going to see these little red dots or concerns, like you said, moving.
And I would say on the parking, on the parking fund, because it is now one fund, which is nice, it used to be several of them, and it was much harder to follow. But the, um, on that fund, even, even without these agreements, and we've now getting into the details of them, which I'm not particularly familiar with, we have consistently seen parking operations with a surplus, which has allowed us to invest in those capital developments and pay the debt on these capital developments at the riverfront and in other garages. Um, what we're seeing this year is mostly one-time pieces that we know we're going to have to take out of reserves in those funds. And I would expect though, I think we were very close to breaking even last year in the parking fund, um, but it has typically had a surplus, and I expect we'll be back there within a year or two.
Okay, great. My last question is, uh, hotel motel, is that on here? I didn't see it.
Hotel motel is on there.
Is that, what is that looking like? That's a restricted fund.
Sure. I believe we're, we're projecting a slight surplus there, it's 258, I remember the number off the top of my head. Um, and yeah, we're looking at probably almost a $2 million growth in that fund this year. We're looking at probably lodging taxes, um, returning to 2019 levels this year. And in fact, um, uh, one of our staff, our, our lodging tax, um, manager, um, Lisa Anderson, is looking at one of those last checks that we're expecting to see for Q2 now, and it looks like we will exceed, um, 2019 in Q2 of 2023. This is not, this is Q2, so this is only through June, we're not talking about the bump we're going to see in July from, I think there was a concert, maybe?
Oh, yeah. Bite her back every year.
So this is just through June, and we are looking at probably exceeding 2019 figures in Q2.
2019 was, I wasn't here, was that a great?
Well, it was just, you know, it's sort of the ta, the top year, obviously lodging tax was, you know, a completely different picture in 2020. So 2019 is the high year, um, on a lot of our taxes.
Great, that's awesome. Yep, just wanted to ask that. Okay, Vice President Dreehouse.
Um, thank you, John. Thanks for the presentation. Again, given that this is only one quarter, it's hard to extrapolate, but it's always good information to have and as we kind of think through trends. So talk to me a little bit about, and, and I don't know if you know the impact yet of the state budget and indigent defense, and what that means to, um, the, the public defender in particular?
Right, and that number, by the way, is also, you know, that's a better number in Q2 than it was in Q1. Because when we did Q1, we didn't know where the state budget was going to go in terms of that reimbursement percentage. So on the public defender revenue, we're up 2.1 million from where we were in our Q1 estimate there, because the, let's see if I can find the note, public defender, um, we were assuming the rest of the year at about 70% reimbursement, which is what we knew we were getting as of Q1. With the state budget passing, that bumped up to 85%. So now we're assuming 85 in the second half of the year, which is why we're seeing that increase in reimbursement.
Okay, so, yeah, we're going to do a little bit better.
We are definitely doing a little bit better, yes.
All right, good. Um, one other procedural question for you. So as we, um, think about where the budget's going to land and the different departments have to, uh, interact with the budget analysts that we have over here, when are they supposed to turn in, for lack of a better, um, phrase, turn in their budgets for this coming budget cycle?
Sure, budget entry for 2024 closed theoretically last Friday. So we are knocking, we are nailing down those figures now with departments.
Okay, so we don't have a sense of what that's going to look like quite yet by way Okay, so we don't have a sense of what that's gonna look like quite yet by way of, you know, it's, you know, higher personnel costs or, you know, whatever they may-
We're a long way from any, any solid numbers on 2024. At this point, you know, we're, we're just working with the departments to make sure all of the baseline is set and entered into the system. And probably within a month, we'll start to work, work on those numbers and get a sense of where we're headed.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you, John, so much for you and your awesome, awesome staff, just doing a great job. I wish the media had stayed to hear this. This is worth publicizing. This report needs to, we need to send it out there to the community for people to see.
So Chris Wedrick is still here. You just can't see him because of the pool. I don't want you to feel bad, Chris.
Chris is here.
Oh, is Scott here too? All right.
Uh-oh, it's a battle.
We can't, we can't see.
Hurry, you're in the inquiries.
Well, awesome. I just want to make a couple of comments that in 2018, when I ran for office, we were in a $29 million hole. I remember that. And people were saying, "Why do you want to be a part of something that's sinking?" And I said, "That's why." So in 2019, and I heard you say, right, right when I came, 2019, we've been going up ever since. I don't know if I had anything to do with it, but I will take some credit for that. We are a blessed county. And this overflow is intentional and it's purposeful. This has been, the board has been very intentional in its decisions and our spending. And that's why we are where we are today. And so when I look at this, this is a big deal because I know from whence I came, and Denise was here when it was like that, and to see this, I know in 2021, I was telling Jeff and you also, I was sounding the alarm, like, wait a minute now, our reserve is starting to go down. Let's slow down a little bit. And so we knew that eventually it would catch up, and you, and you told me that. So I'm just really excited, elated of where this county is and it needs to be publicized. What a great job this, this board is doing. So this is really so good to see. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ludo.
Last related item, just as we're starting to talk more strategically about budget. I sent a memo to the board last week asking for budget policy guidance memos by August 31st. So if commissioners need additional time, et cetera, just let me know. We just wanted to flag that as something that's out there. And if I could have the deference of the board for one last final second on an unrelated matter?
No, go on, go on.
I just wanted to make one introduction today. So in the back of the room here today is Deputy Assistant Administrator Anson Turley, who has started in our office. Many of you may remember-
Walk up here so the people can see your face.
Former village manager of Woodlawn, former Assistant Chief of Cincinnati Fire, former emergency manager over at the City of Cincinnati, just a wealth of experience in a lot of different areas. He's gonna be a, a real help to the administration on a lot of special projects we're working on. So just wanted to formally introduce him today if the board had not previously met him.
Welcome. Welcome aboard. Anything else, Mr. Ludo? Okay. Everybody's smiling. Hate for them meeting the end with all these smiles. But we do have two executive sessions, so I make a motion for us to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G4, to discuss collective bargaining and to discuss, and also the same one, I guess, collective bargaining. Does that, did I do that right, Michael? Two. Two collective bargains. I make a motion to go into two collective bargaining executive sessions.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.